The President and Board of Trustees, roll call please.
Trusty Rasich.
Here.
Trusty Wajowski.
Here.
Trusty Bonucci.
Here.
Trusty Lamb.
Here.
Trusty Rourke.
Here.
Trusty Peck.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here, if we could rise for the pledge.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole workshop held on October 24th.
移到
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you that motion carries. Presidential comments?
I have just a couple, the first one being a proclamation declaring November 17th, 2016, World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the Village of Plainfield. Whereas in 2016, an estimated 53,070 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States and 41,780 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and currently the third-leading cause of cancer death in the United States and is projected to become second by 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in single digits, just at just 7%. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in the later stages. And 71% of the pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year after their diagnosis. Whereas approximately 1,640 deaths will occur in Illinois in 2016. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. And whereas there will be an estimated 418,451 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide in 2020. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of the Village of Plainfield are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research in its early stages in causing and effective treatments. Now therefore, may it resolve that Mayor Collins and the Board of Trustees designate November 17th, 2016, World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the Village of Plainfield, adopted this day, 14 November. And I think we have representatives?
Okay. Mayor Collins, Village of Plainfield Board of Trustees, Spanish guests, and Pancreatic Cancer Action Network volunteers. As a community member of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to address the board. Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the only national organization creating hope in a comprehensive way, the research, patient, community outreach, and advocacy for cancer. I am here today because I lost both my parents, Jean and Micah, to pancreatic cancer. They were diagnosed with this terrible disease three months back in September or December 2004. I thought we lost this battle in 2005, 13 months after diagnosis. My mother lost her battle in September 2008, 44 months after this diagnosis. We have done an annual benefit for the past 10 years called the Time For Hope to raise both awareness and hopes to someday make a difference in the fight against this horrible disease. It isn't only my life and the lives of my family members who have been touched by this disease. This is a problem that can affect our entire community. In fact, estimates predict the incidence of pancreatic cancer cases expected to increase by 55% between now and the year 2023. Because there are no, currently, no early detection tools or effective treatments, just 7% of those diagnosed will survive five years. We would like to thank Mayor Collins, Village of Plainfield Board of Trustees, your important contribution to this national fight against pancreatic cancer. By declaring November 17th to be World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the Village of Plainfield, you are helping us to do the critical work of making the public aware of this disease in its truly lethal nature. We hope by working together with you, we will be able to continue to raise awareness, support patients and their families, and raise funds to find the cure through both individual contributions and federal funding and legislation. We would also like to explore what we can do in the community going forward to raise awareness for this disease even further by possibly lighting a village building purple during the month of November, having purple rubens available for folks to take at the village hall, or things of that nature to promote the awareness. My colleagues and I that are here tonight will be happy to answer any questions you might have. We would encourage you to visit our website, pancan.org, to learn more about pancreatic cancer, our organization and information, the research we fund, comprehensive health services we provide. Thank you again for supporting our cause and for helping us raise awareness about pancreatic cancer.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, I have one other thing. Oh, okay.
Mayor Collins, can we comment about the proclamation, or should we wait? Okay. I would like to simply say to the Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Group, thank you for your support, thank you for your action, and definitely making people aware not only of pancreatic cancer but cancer in general is obviously very important to the people who live in our society. So often, and I can remember definitely in my lifetime and an awful lot of the lifetimes of board members and individuals in this room, you couldn't even say the word "cancer." If the last person to find out they had cancer was the victim himself. And I'm talking about in the 50s and the 1960s. Doctors would diagnose someone having cancer and nobody'd tell the patient about it. But you know, with the awareness, the simple fact that you are bringing it to the forefront really gives an awful lot of hope to individuals who are suffering not only from perhaps pancreatic cancer but any cancer in general. Because awareness, just the physical support, the spiritual support, every type of support, financial support, just the total support that you give to an individual who has been diagnosed with not only perhaps pancreatic cancer but any cancer in general is significant and very, very caring. And your work is, hopefully is rewarding, I know it will be. And as, in my own situation, a family member of mine was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer a good number in 2001. He was diagnosed and didn't survive six months. And as I told you just before the meeting, a friend of mine was also diagnosed about seven or eight years ago, had a specific type of surgery, and she's still functioning very well today. So awareness, early detection are very, very important. And your group and your actions are making people aware of that fact. And hopefully, we'll be able to put, have cancer awareness in our, cancer, pancreatic cancer in our past and not in our future. And thank you again for your very marvelous and caring work.
I'd like to make a comment as well. I know personally, Mrs. Campos, Nora Campos, in the audience here, and she has lobbied tirelessly at the federal level with our congressman and actually a couple of our different congressmen. She has gone to Washington on several occasions to give testimony. She has worked tirelessly at the state level with the governor's office to get awareness and try to work on funding to make sure that appropriate enough funding is being put towards this horrific disease that just needs so much research. So she, she lost her own husband, Javier, and you know, he was, he was a veteran, he was a husband, father, and didn't get to see his granddaughter. But all the work that this group is doing is just tireless effort, so they should be commended, but we, we need to keep it in the forefront.
Yeah, results are important. I lost my father probably 40 years ago to pancreatic cancer. He lasted about three weeks after diagnosis. And my next-door neighbor actually passed away early this year from pancreatic cancer. He looked like he had a problem, but he kept losing weight but didn't know what it was. And by the time he found out it was pancreatic cancer, it was too late. They're trying to shrink it to the point where he could do surgery at that point, 10 days before surgery was scheduled, found it, went into his liver, and that was it. So 10 days after, he was gone, so. I do hope early detection gets a lot of attention, that really will make a huge difference. But thank you for your efforts, though.
Okay, I just had one other item, too. It's been a discussion of this board for a number of years about putting our agenda online so it can be viewed by the public. And for a long time, we did not have the software, and that has been corrected. And Rick and Michelle, Brian and Tracy have been working diligently to do this. And we're soon to roll this out. And it's going to have a number of facets to it that I think everyone will be happy with. So Rick, would you like to just make a couple of comments, please?
Sure, I'll give you a quick preview. As the mayor said, we'll be rolling this out this, earlier, or later this week. Basically, it'll be just a change to the village website where you currently have agendas and meetings, but it'll allow the posting of the full agenda and the packet as well. If you click on the link for the agenda, it'll load the document, and then it'll also link you to any subsequent documents or substant, or relevant documents to those items on the agenda. So if we look at the Pancreatic Cancer Day proclamation, you can get it directly on the website. We're also, and the board will see, next week at the village board meeting, we'll bring, bring forward a item to also add the video to this page, so you'll be able to come here, see the meeting, click on the link to live streaming video of the meeting, watch it as it's going on from any internet connection, and then after the meeting is over, the video will be archived on this page. So Michelle and I worked, we went through a couple of iterations with different products. We found that this one from Granicus is, was the most user-friendly, easiest to integrate on a website, and provides a lot of functionality on the backend in terms of creating the agenda and packets and workflow and routing and all that kind of thing. So we're very happy with this solution, and that's why we're going to be asking to roll out the video portion as well. Hopefully, we're targeting a January roll, one rollout for that. Everything will be combined in this one page, and this will be the one-stop shop. It'll be two clicks away from the main menu. That's something we try to do on our website, is put everything two or three clicks, so it's easy for residents to find the information they're looking for. And having everything on this one page, I think, will, will add to that accessibility. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, more for Mr. Murphy? When this comes live, are we going to let the residents know through the water bills and the email updates and all that?
Yep, as soon as tomorrow, Rick and Amy and Michelle will be getting together a campaign to make sure we get this information out.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, by the way, everybody involved.
I don't, I don't have a question, I would just say outstanding, I guess is the word that comes to mind. I know there's a lot of people that have been asking for this for a long time, so thank you very much. I can't even begin to fathom the amount of work that you guys put in. I'm not an IT person, but I'm sure when it looks this easy on, on the screen, I'm sure there's a lot of stuff that went in behind the scenes, so thank you very much.
Yeah, as you roll it out, listen for feedback, too, from people who do try it. You may find, you know, some glitches or some other things, or if they say it's fabulous, you know, feed us that information, too. But the first two, three weeks, or first month or so, probably is gonna be a good test, see what kind of feedback we get. But it's exciting, though, I'm glad you finally pulled it off, that's a lot of effort. Thank you.
Yeah, we wanted to find something that would work right and be easy for people to use.
Does this qualify as, as attending a meeting for all those students out there?
Or board members? Enough to get our signatures that way, but hey, why not? It could be better.
Now, to that point that you were just getting at, Trusty Rasich said, or board members, there are some additional tools that we, that Rick can connect with you and show how instead of you getting a hard paper copy, there are some other ways as well that we can use this as a system to augment your packets. So if you want to get together with Rick, and he can show you one-on-one what you can possibly do, it's rather robust and pretty impressive.
I don't have anything else, thank you.
Trustees' comments?
Just have a observation, Pilcher Road has gotten resurfaced. Speed bumps make a difference. Without speed bumps, which is, the road is currently, without speed bumps, people are going at least 10 miles an hour faster. And kind of oblivious to the fact there are three lanes there, so we're anxious to see it get back. And truly, speed bumps are a speed calming device, so thank you for putting them back in.
Yeah, and just to give the board a quick update, of course, the paving's completed, the speed tables will be installed tomorrow. The pavement marking, weather depending, will be installed on Wednesday, Thursday. So in essence, that entire project will be completed by the end of this week. And it also did include some pretty significant drainage improvements, too, as well, which we're pleased with the way it finished, and we're very pleased with the weather, because it's really cooperated for us, too, as well. So, thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I have a question. Ellen, another citizen, different roadway, asked about speed bumps. How would they pursue questioning that to see if it's appropriate for the street that they live on if they're asking for that?
It's best to start through the police department, police and engineering get together and, and meet along with the fire district and, and all the other entities, too, as part of the traffic committee for discussions, things of that nature. So if someone wanted to draft a letter of request, forward it to either the police or public works. We'll work that through the process, look at the engineering standards for it, too, as well, and see if it fits that area. And then consider it, and then respond as well. So, and we would be happy to keep the board apprised if those items do come, come to our attention, too, as well.
Thank you.
And just a community note, I think there's some excitement brewing up north with the Plainfield North Tigers in their playoff run. They had a rather impressive win last week and the week before, for that matter. So they're, all my wishes of good luck to all the students that are there, and all the students in the Plainfield High Schools I think they represent as well.
Are there any other trustee comments? Not this would be the time for public comments? There are no public comments, then we'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda is 2017, 2018 draft fiscal year budget.
Thank you. Tonight, staff will review, I'll review, some of the historical information on the past few budget years, where we're at currently, and how we're looking year-to-date, and where those numbers are, are looking as far as future, on a very, very high-level basis. And the board recalls, we started our process last year in, in the same vein. We went through some of the high-level overview and gave some highlights as to the revenue side and where our expenses are falling. So that's the intent tonight, is just to, to take you through and walk you through a little bit of some historicals, especially since the audit was just approved. We've got some more truer numbers that are more timely as opposed to when we go through the budget process at the, you know, like in February or March, the fiscal '16 numbers are more accurate. So feel free to come in with any questions along the way, but I'm gonna walk through some of these slides, and you should have it in your packet as well. The current fiscal year, which we're in, which is '17, our revenues are 23 and a half million. As you can see in the chart, the primary top sources are state of Illinois taxes at 42% and property taxes are 22%, representing, you know, state of Illinois is representing right about 9.9 million, and property taxes are at about 5.2 within the general fund itself. The third level is charges for services at 18%. That is primarily our refuse fee that we collect. So it's ultimately a pass-through minus some administration costs for us to maintain the program. So we're gonna focus on the top two revenue streams in these first few slides. So the state revenues, which is just over 9.9 million, the top state of Illinois tax revenue is, is our sales tax between the, the home rule and, and the municipal, which is within our budget. We're seeing in those revenues, pretty consistent, and you'll see a slide next on how those revenues have been over the past few fiscal years. Right now, it's trending at only about 1% through this year as an increase, so we're watching it closely. Every month has been consistent, if not slightly better than last year at this point, but historically, we've seen a little bit higher numbers at this point. But we do know that Christmas is coming, and I think shopping has been lagged, so we're hoping to see some of those revenues increase slightly. And we should be fine with those, I'm not too concerned at this point. The one that we're really focusing on, and that you've probably gotten communication on, is the Illinois income tax, which is 33% of this particular portion, or 3.3 million, which is what we've budgeted. And we received communication on Wednesday regarding the Illinois income tax revenues and the depletion's the wrong word, the lack of receipt from the municipality side. To put it into perspective, based on our current fiscal year-to-date versus last fiscal year-to-date, for our fiscal year, we are short $333,000 in income on this revenue line. The good news is, and hopefully the board recalls, we have been projecting a very conservative income tax revenue stream the last few years. The village has been lucky up until this past, this current fiscal year that the income tax revenues have not been detrimental, they've been actually increasing the last couple of years. This is the first time that we're seeing this decline. We budgeted a 20% reduction based on last year's numbers, so that's about $900,000 that we budgeted. This is 333,000 of that. So from our perspective, hopefully, the situation will turn, and we'll see, at this point, there's no real explanation as to what's happening. There, IML is looking at it, IGFOA is looking at it, along, working with the state to determine exactly why the decline is happening. There's some inference of corporate income tax and some losses of, of employees over the last year that could cause some of this, but it's a, quite a large number. So they haven't really determined the specific actual reason why we're seeing such a large decline in this figure. From the village's perspective, again, I think we poised ourselves appropriately at the beginning of the fiscal year and budgeted where we needed to be. And we'll absolutely keep the board appraised of any changes or any communications that come along regarding this particular line.
I'm sorry, can you just explain, so how, how does our share get determined from, is it strictly from the state? Is there a formula? Is it by population? Is it by, how is it?
Yeah, there's a formula that comes from the state that, so it's not necessarily, the formula hasn't changed. There's a percentage that's charged through income tax, and was it last, a year ago, January, that, that percentage changed, and that was based on state legislation that was sunsetted back in 2015 in January. But we had not seen any difference, you know, last fiscal year, we actually saw an increase in income tax revenue. So there hasn't been much rhyme or reason as to why, there's, you know, to our knowledge today, maybe there's a calculation issue that is not being discovered yet, I, I can't speak to that, so.
No, the IML is doing a lot of additional research on behalf of all the municipal organizations in the state to determine exactly what's going on, and the response that the IML has gotten so far from the state is that they don't understand it. Now, that being said, if you don't mind, Mrs. Plekum and I, when we took a look at these numbers, as we were talking about before, and the projections that we put in, that's why we baked in the 20% reduction. We actually saw what we're seeing now just a little bit earlier than we had anticipated. So it's coming as a surprise to a number, a number of other organizations, but it is something that if you take a look back at what those changes were, it, it's rather easy to see that this was coming on. The good news is, as Tracy pointed out, we're running about 330 now, so if you annualize that out, it's about $660,000. We've, we've planned for a reduction of about, it's actually 880, we're rounding up to 900,000. So, you know, from our point of view, we're, we're still actually, our conservative nature is, is playing out to be, still keeping us into a, a black financial situation.
So do you know when this happens? I mean, is it consistent against, against all municipalities, or are certain ones affected more than others, or?
Yeah, no, it's consistent across the board. Yeah, exactly. The formula is, it's basically, they take the big pie of money and they divide it by the number of people, and then.
So it is based upon population?
Typically.
Okay, thank you.
So as we get more information, we'll, we'll share it. I have a feeling we'll, there'll be a lot more discussions on this as we move forward, and during our budget presentations, you'll, you'll see this topic again.
Before you leave that one, Tracy, I'd like to go back to the sales taxes, home rule versus municipal sales tax. As I recall, home rule sales taxes. As I recall, the home rule sales tax is 1.5%. And the municipal sales tax, our part of the state is what, 2% or something like that? I don't understand that there's an order of magnitude difference between home rule and municipal. Can you explain that for me briefly?
Right, the home rule sales tax, the past few budget years, there's been a budget of about, of 500,000 each year to be transferred from capital, basically to, to supplement some of the costs of the street department from the capital fund. That portion in the past has never, never, has not never been actually moved into corporate. So based on our revenue projections, we include the 500,000, but if you look at past historical data, usually the home rule sales tax does not, is not applied within our corporate fund. But it is part of the discussions in the, in the beginning, based on some of the revenue projections we have, by the end of the fiscal year, that 500,000 usually sits in capital.
Okay, it's just, it's arbitrary. We're talking only general fund right now, and.
Correct.
That's the piece of the home rule sales tax, because, okay, I think that's what I was looking for.
But as well, the, the number between the home rule sales tax and the municipal sales tax is not exactly a 50% break. There are certain things that the state puts the 1% on that we don't collect at the local level.
Right. It's close, but it's not 100% of.
Which leads to my point of clarification, Brian. Some of those items that we do not collect, home rule sales tax on, obviously services, which municipal sales tax is not collected on, but are we also, can you maybe give a couple of examples? I believe the car dealerships, we don't have home rule sales tax on, or any other?
Right.
Well, car dealerships on new cars, on parts, we do.
Used cars?
Used cars don't either. Food and beverage, right? I'm looking.
Right, yeah. There's a specific difference between prepared food versus packaged food. Boats, RVs, I mean, the big-ticket items, which, you know, that makes a little bit of a difference when you look at the global scheme, when you have auto dealerships in town as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
And, and as we go through our water and sewer budget, we have home rule sales tax within that budget that's offsetting some of the, some of the expenditures. And then with our capital fund, I can bring a summary along, and, and we do that typically quarterly, so our October reporting should have some of that quarterly updates that, that you're asking about, total sales tax budgeted for each fund, it summarizes it there as well, so. For general fund, this is just the municipal sales tax revenue, so not the home rule sales tax revenue by fiscal year. And you'll see, like I said, '17 is budgeted relatively flat to '16. Reason being is, when we, when we do the budget, we usually do the revenue projections in like January, February. Sometimes we have a better month in, in February, March, or April. But also, the trends have been different for the last few years. So if you go back to '13, that 2013 number is just almost 5.5% increase from the prior year. Then we hit three and just under 3% increases, and last year we were right around 5%. There hasn't been a real consistent number within sales tax in the last few years. So the combination of not having the last few months of the fiscal year, we tried to stay with a conservative monthly average, it was a little higher last year, the last couple of months, as well as just not knowing, not having a great trend line to go with. We have, we're showing a little more of a flat line for fiscal '17. Again, it's at 1%, so it might have been a good idea to keep it at the number that we're at. So we'll watch it closely and see where, where we are as the months go along. Property tax revenue was the other component that was about 22% of our revenues. You can see we've been relatively flat, you know, the revenues have been the same since approximately 2011. Right now, we're, we're looking at about, fiscal year-to-date, we're right about 99% collection, with, at least from a budget perspective. When we, when we do the budget, we do anticipate right around a 98, 95 to 98% collection based on what we see from our audit. Our audit usually is right around 98% collection. So we're right on target with our property tax revenues this year. I, I don't anticipate any issues in this. I don't anticipate any issues in this revenue stream for this current fiscal year. We'll talk about next year and the next topic. And then building permit revenues, which is something that I like to show, because it's been such an interesting revenue stream. This is one that's currently at sixty-eight percent of the fiscal year through October. Last year was at sixty-one percent, so we're running pretty close to where we were last year. You see, it looks like there's a dip within the numbers. And this particular one, February and April numbers were a lot higher than what the monthly averages were and what we predicted. So, that's why it looks like they're slightly declining. We're still running current at sixty-eight percent. That makes sense because we're going into the slower season for the billing department. So, we won't see any, we shouldn't see any large dollar amounts coming in until the spring. So, we may see a little uptick in the final number for permit revenues, but pretty comfortable where the numbers are now. This particular revenue line, just the building permit revenues are like three point six percent of our overall budget. Back in two thousand and six, this one only line item was thirty-seven percent of our budget in general fund. So, it's changed significantly over the past few years. This slide is just showing a historical expense summary. Two thousand and sixteen actual is included since the audit was complete. And the interfunds that you see are representing the fund balance policy that was put into place back in fiscal year fourteen. And then fiscal seventeen is reflected and it's about a ten percent increase. But keep in mind, salary and benefits are right around nine point seven percent of an increase. The good news is, is hopefully that the health insurance increases aren't, they're not coming across. The renewal was much better than anticipated, so we should see some savings within those line items as well. And this is just a pie representation of the previous slide. Salary and benefits are sixty-six percent of the overall general fund budget. And contractual services is the third, is the third arm at twenty-six percent. Contractual services includes the refuse collection as well as snow removal, things of that nature. So, it's expected to be one of our higher expense percentages and it's consistent from year to year. Again, just another view of historical revenue and expense summaries. From sixteen to seventeen adopted budget, you'll see there a two and a half percent decline on the revenue side. Primarily, it is the state of Illinois taxes, that you can see the difference in the actual versus the adopted. It's directly related to what we talked about earlier in the revenue side. The charges for services is ultimately, again, the refuse collection per contract and license and permanence. Those are the ones that we're looking at a little closely. I think we'll be pretty close to last year. Then, as I mentioned before, we had, this is the fund balance history. This is unassigned fund balance. This is based on our fund balance policy, we try to maintain a forty percent fund balance maximum. And if it falls, based on the policy, if it falls at the end of the audit over forty percent, then there's a mechanism to transfer those residual funds to the capital improvement to help future capital costs for the village. So, what you're seeing is this is a stabilization of the fund balance in the current fiscal years. And you can see, fund balance went down to just about ten percent back in two thousand and nine. We've been bringing that fund balance up and now we're at a maintenance mode, so that's the good news. Interestingly enough, when I flip to the next slide on the capital fund, you can see the impact of the fund balance policy within the last couple of fiscal years. The board may recall, we were about twelve million dollars deficit back in two thousand and seven. But more recently, the increase in fund balance is directly related to the fund balance policy that's in place currently. So, the capital projects fund is getting a nice reserve for future projects that will be needed and necessary for maintenance and ongoing projects in the village.
And before you leave that slide, I do want to, again, thank the board for all of the heavy lifting that you've done on this particular piece. Back when we were reissuing or refinancing some bonds in two thousand and eight, as you'll recall, I'm sorry, it wasn't two thousand and eight, it was two thousand and ten. We went before the rating agencies, we being, Mrs. Plekum and I, and we made a commitment to the rating agencies that we would get rid of that negative fund balance, which was sitting at twelve million dollars at that point. That we would eat away at that at a million dollars a year for the next twelve years. The rating agencies were really impressed with the commitment that we had going into that. And I think it's very important to point out that we beat that rather quickly. And again, it's because of the decisions that you made with regard to the financial policies that allowed for us to transfer funds over to be able to close this out and actually set the capital fund back to a place where we can actually start talking about doing some capital projects. So, that's entirely on the board for the heavy lifting that you did, so thank you for that.
Well, honestly, you two of you deserve a lot of credit for what's happened though, because one of the things you've been very conservative in forecasting revenue, and that's extremely important. You had a budget, you balance a budget based on that. If you take a look at the expenses, you've got what, forty-six percent in wages, twenty percent in benefits? And the water and sewer is, well, the garbage as well, is a pass-through, if you will. So, you have sixty-six plus water and sewer. There's only a little bit that you can play with on expenses, it's like ten percent or thereabouts. So, being conservative on revenue is extremely important in order to have the kind of progress that you have. So, I give you a lot of credit for forecasting and controlling the budget because of that. Unfortunately, we were able to deliver above the revenue, which has made a huge difference. Why the progress has been so phenomenal. You can give us credit, but you'd serve a lot for making it happen, so both of you.
No problem. Okay, current, where are we? How's this year going? Right now, we're pretty much on par as where we were last fiscal year at this time. We're at sixty-five percent of revenues and expenditures are at forty-five. The prior year, we were at sixty-six and forty-six, so we're exactly where we were. Like I said, the things that are concerning, I think, were conservatively put within the budget. So, I think that's why the numbers are coming across the way, you know, we're comfortable with what's happening. There's nothing, you know, I'm not going to say the S-word, so we're going to get through the next few months without a whole lot of issue, hopefully. And contractual services will hopefully stay within a reasonable dollar amount. If I say the word, it's going to happen. Don't talk, Alan, keep going. So, year to date, we're doing great. These numbers are, you'll see the October reports at the board meeting next week. They may be a little different, this is pre-audited, but it's just some miscellaneous interest that you might see post. But other than that, they're pretty, they're pretty on par. And then forecast, so one of the reasons why we go through this whole historical perspective and where are we today is to look at, obviously, we're working on the eighteen fiscal year budget and get some high-level insight into what is going to happen and where staff sees things on a very flat basis, meaning no new hires, no major initiatives. Just a general increase based on cost of living, salary benefits, health insurance, things of that nature. And that's what this picture's representing. I will note fiscal eighteen, property taxes, as we go into the next discussion. We usually, like I mentioned, conservatively budget about ninety-five to ninety-eight percent collection. The fiscal eighteen does not include the pension increase on the revenue or the expense side, so it's pretty much a wash. So, I want to note that because if you look at the property tax number on this page and when we start talking property taxes, there's a little difference in the number. But at the end of the day, it's because we're going to be recommending funding an additional amount to police pension. That's where the additional revenue is going on the property taxes. So, globally, it's a non-issue when we look at these as it relates to revenue and expenditures, it's a wash. So, what you're seeing here is we're seeing roughly two percent, just over two percent increases across all of these fiscal years. And again, that is based on revenue estimates. Some of them, as you can see, are basically flat, there's no increases in the line items. Some of them are, definitely have an increase and it's directly related to what typically has an increase from year to year. Like I said, health insurance, salary increases. On the revenue side, a slight increase on, you know, potentially sales tax, charges for services, which relates to our contractual obligation for refuse. So, this is a very conservative approach, but it does not include any new hires, any project initiatives other than what's typically seen within this current fiscal year budget. And the reason why this is being presented is to show that we're, you know, given that, we're maintaining a consistent budget to actual surplus deficit almost at a net approach. So, that was the object of showing where we're at. Now, what we'll be bringing forward then is each department will be providing their budget presentation. There'll be some recommendations on if there are additional funds, which division, you know, where they see where they could utilize some funds and prioritize that throughout the discussions that we have in the next few months. So, I wanted to start with just like a blanket, general, no change. And then as we go through, and we did this last year within our budget discussions, I think we had talked about staffing, projects that are within our corporate fund. You know, for example, just upgrading the sound system and getting the packets online was one thing that we spoke to. And then we added it as part of the budget process. So, that was what the snapshot was generally for. And what I also like to add, and I'll flip, we can flip back to the slide if you have any questions, is just on the staffing schedule. And this is, again, where we're at currently, what was budgeted for fiscal seventeen. We're at a hundred and thirty-nine employees at this point, still short from where we were back in, you know, you can go back to two thousand and nine fiscal year. You know, we're maintaining a consistent staff. We haven't really increased too much on either end. I think staff is cognizant of the revenue challenges and we've tried to do as much as we can with the staff that we have in place. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer it. Again, just wanted to give a general overview before we delve into some of the specifics departments.
Now, Mrs. Plekum, can you speak to what the schedule is for the levy timeline for when it comes to the board for consideration?
The next topic I was going to speak to, yes.
I get ahead of you.
But I can speak to it now.
Thank you, sorry.
That's okay. The levy has to be filed with the county by the last Tuesday in December. If you work backwards, if there's a request of over five percent, now this is on a non-home rule, but we, the village has always done a public hearing that has to be handled, you know, either on the approval date of the levy or usually the board meeting before, depending on the timing of everything. And that has to be posted in the newspaper. But the first thing that has to happen is, the hope is that Monday's board meeting is that there'll be an authorization to extend a dollar amount for the levy amount. And that gets published. And at that point, that drives the process on the public hearing date and then the approval process. So, that gives the public a chance to bring their input in as well.
How do you convert that percentage into the dollar amount that you're going to ask to extend?
Yeah, I don't do that. No, I'm just kidding. I do do that. The county takes the overall E A V for the whole taxing area. You know, the village of Plainfield has multiple districts and depending on where you live, it's slightly different if you're in Oswego or Plainfield Services. They'll take that entire area and what they do is they take the dollar amounts requested by each entity and calculate the rate from that. So, the rate doesn't get determined until the spring and when all the E A Vs are solidified. And then it gets calculated and then what happens is that gets returned back to staff. And what I do, the intent of the board has been to maintain the same rate. So, even though if we request a higher dollar amount, that calculates a higher rate, I will go back and correct the dollar amount to make the rate what was approved through the board. They calculate based on dollar amounts requested, it's not by rate.
When the, as the Great Recession was going on and we were seeing a drop in E A V valuations, one of the things that we committed to doing was not capturing any more revenue off of property taxes than what we were doing before. So, if you go back to that one slide.
Oh, you know, it's on the next, I was looking to see what was on here.
You had it right.
It's on the other.
Actually, two more up. Anyhow, we took a position that we wouldn't bring in any more revenue than, yeah, it's slide three. There we are. So, we didn't want to bring in any more revenues than we were already collecting. We thought that was the appropriate and responsible thing to do as families were struggling. We didn't think it was right to be able to take any additional revenues in. So, I know a number of other taxing jurisdictions around the Chicago land area still took what they were legally allowed to take, which is up to five percent. We took a position of we were going to leave that dollar amount the same. The feedback that we got through the strategic planning efforts and the like though was that while we appreciate, that's what you're saying, we're still seeing an increase in the actual property tax rate. So, the question in favor was, would we please go back to just living by whatever that tax rate is? And so, a few years ago, we took a position of, yes, we'll do that. We knew that we'd see a dip for a couple of years in what our revenues would be, but it was the right thing to do on behalf of our residents. So, that's why Mrs. Plekum is explaining that what she does is we set the number to look high, so she can capture it all and then we turn it back down, dial that number back down to what the rate is.
So, the dollar amount that you will ask for is not necessarily, it is tied to the rate, but it can be adjusted if, say, the board were to say, we want to reduce the rate by a little bit. You can always reduce it later, but you're just submitting the number to capture the maximum amount possible. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and usually the board authorizes the dollar amount with the intent of the rate to maintain the same rate. And then I will forward to the county that request from the board. So, I'll send them the authorization of the dollar amount. And then, once the values come in, I also send an authorization letter to reduce to the rate. It's usually the corporate rate that gets reduced at that point, based on what comes back.
So, I'm sorry, so the one, and I'm sorry if I'm jumping ahead to the other.
That's okay.
Note here, but it says approximately four percent increase in assessed value.
Yes.
But then it talks about our tax levy change of three point two nine percent.
Right, so this first slide for the tax levy, this was the change, this is the change in E A V across the last seven levy years. And last levy year, we saw three point two nine percent increase in E A V. So, that was for tax levy fifteen.
Okay, so is next year, are we estimating a four percent then?
Next year, yeah, estimates are coming in right around four percent, a little over four percent at this point. So, what you have in your packet is a worksheet though that shows actually about eight and a half percent increase in E A V. And what that does, it allows for the county to extend the dollar amount. They will come back and calculate a rate and then when staff receives the actual E A V numbers, if for some reason the estimate was six percent and we were thinking it was four and we only extended four percent, the additional two percent would not be able to be captured because we extended a dollar amount that was only four percent higher than last year. So, if we look at this first chart as an example, that three point two nine percent, if staff estimated, E A V's not, E A V's only going to go up two percent. And that's what was extended, the dollar amount of the amount that's requested, which is right around five million dollars, five point eight million dollars. And the E A V actually went up five percent. That difference between the two or three percent and five percent can't be captured this current year. It goes off of the dollar amount, so I can only collect what I ask for, for the village. So, what happens is the request is higher and then we work back to that four point six six nine rate.
So, I guess I'm, sorry, I'm learning here, so.
That's okay.
So, the county doesn't give you the assessed value until the fall?
Right, we don't get it until the spring, right. So, I reach out to the counties to ask what their preliminary numbers are and right now, they're just over four percent, just a little over four percent. But that does not include any exemptions and it does not include anyone that is contesting the property tax bill that hasn't gone through the process yet. So, it's always a question of how accurate is that number today? Because between now and March, it could change based on what's out there for appeals.
Right, so we're not doing percentage, we're doing actual dollars?
We're doing actual dollars, correct, but.
I can go on their website today and see. I can go on their website today and see my, my assessed value for next year. So in other words, it's, they already locked it in. I don't know why they won't share that with you. Because some of the other things you just mentioned, I guess.
Right. Some have applied for exemptions, some have contested their property tax values, and sometimes it's on the industrial commercial side, too. Those are larger dollar amounts that are pending. They're just not finalized. So it's not necessarily that it changes extremely, but it's, there are these things out there that is unknown at this point. It's been, my, my experience has been the last few years that it's, it's not been a hundred percent accurate, but it's been a good estimate to work off of. And typically we'll see that when we, when the village extends the dollar amount, which has been higher every year, that when we, when we keep this consistent rate, we typically do extend a higher dollar value and it's been brought down every year. Maybe not eight and a half percent. It just depends on where the EAV comes in at the end of the day, just to keep the rate where, where it's been the last few years.
So what actual dollar weight are we gonna, or what dollar figure are we asking for?
Six million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred.
Where is that one at? I'm sorry.
It's on the worksheet. It's on the tax levy worksheet within your packet, right after the memo. That's the recommended request.
Oh, I see, okay. So on, on this page here?
Yep.
Thank you.
And then if you look at, and I can put it on the slide, it's on the second page of the memo, but as well, this is, this is what staff feels is more close to what probably will happen when the EAV numbers come in. If there's a four percent increase, the difference is about two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in total revenue to the village. However, two hundred and sixty-six thousand is going to a police pension, funding the police pension based on the extralegal reports that was also included in your packet.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I can't go through these things quick enough.
That's okay.
The six point one three nine that we're gonna ask for next year is, what's, that's, is that the four percent increase from current year? Or is that more because you have to ask for more?
Right. That's about eight and a half percent above our current year, the one point two.
Right. So what, what's going to happen, Trustee O'Rourke, is we put in suggesting the eight and a half percent increase. However, after all of the reconciliation goes forward, what happens then is we get the new produced rates for what our overall tax rate is going to be. And then what happens is Tracy will back that number back down to match up closer to the four and a half percent. This number that we put out there actually reflects a, it's a number just to make sure that we can capture all of that valuation growth. And if that, if we, and then she can back it out. So this spreadsheet, it seems kind of scary. There's a little bit of, it, it's more art than science, I think, is the best way to describe it. What ends up happening is the work on the backside where when you take a look at then the sheet that's up on the screen currently is more likely where we're going to end up looking instead of what will be published for our public hearing. What you're looking at there is seeing an increase in that police pension fund cost that we had talked about before needing to go in. That's about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. As a result, and as we've talked about before, we do try to keep that corporate revenues about the same. We actually will see about a thirty-three thousand dollar reduction in the overall property tax revenues that comes into the corporate account. But that will keep our rate, assuming the four point four percent increase in EAV overall, that's being estimated at this point, at that four, six, six dot nine rate, this is where we're expecting to see those numbers to show up.
Yeah, this is more of an illustration, but it more than likely will be where our revenues will fall. We'll utilize the numbers that's on the screen more so for budget purposes. And depending on how quickly we get the extension back, it's usually mid-March. So from a budget perspective, it's difficult to, you know, to know which one's actual. Staff usually goes with, will go with these numbers that are on the screen, but will levy for any potential additional revenue that might generate through the EAV process. One other thing to note on the EAV calculation, it's a three-year, rolling three-year calculation. So as you can see back in, you know, the impacts from the housing decline really didn't hit until our fiscal year, you know, till levy year ten, you're seeing the reduction. It's a three-year rollback, so that really didn't even anticipate anything. You're seeing the reduction in EAV coming in, a little bit in eleven, twelve, you know. These calculations, because they're rolling through year, we're in a, we're in a third year of, you know, the last two years being a little slightly positive percent change in EAV. So the calculation of the EAV and the rates, it's a rolling three years. So we should see, you know, a little bit better EAV percentage. We're not gonna hit any of these negatives that are on the screen within the calculation that the county does. So not only do they calculate based on dollars and they get to the rate, they also have to take a three-year roll, so.
So, I'm sorry, so based upon that, last year, did we do exactly the same thing? So in other, we, we projected X, but we actually only took Y?
Yeah.
Do you remember what those numbers generally look like? Same, similar to this year?
It's very similar to this, yeah. And the reason is, is I can't go back in March and ask for more money. So for some strange reason, the EAV is, I don't even know, ten percent because of something strange that happened. I can't go ask for that additional revenue at any point in time for the village. They go based off of the dollar amount requested. So if this six point one million for some reason equals a point four, six, six, nine rate, based on the calculations that the county comes back with, we would be able to capture that entire revenue amount. Not likely to happen, but.
All right, now I have to ask the question probably nobody wants except the residents, and that's always, you know, taxes, taxes, taxes. So the question that I would have to ask is, okay, if it's gonna roughly go up to equalize assessed value of four percent, so most peoples can anticipate their taxes for the village portion to go up four percent, is there any way we could keep that level? In other words, no increase to the residents. That's what they always want to know.
We did that for actually quite a number of years where we said we are just going to bring in the same dollar amount in the last, well, since two thousand and ten. We've, our rate has, or the dollar amount has stayed the same or been lower. What we're looking at here is that the dollar amount that would be going into the corporate account would still actually be about the same. Where we're having a change and where you see that additional monies going into is the obligation for the pension fund. So realistically, we are looking at keeping the monies that are going into the corporate account at a, at a level amount. And at this point, we, we can have that conversation a little bit later, but again, as we begin to develop this a little bit more, we, we can explore those discussions. But my recommendation, at least at this point, is that we are keeping the dollar amount that's going into the general fund at the same level. And we're actually a little bit lower, which has been exactly what we've been proposing, doing for, well, seven years now at this point.
And.
I understand what you're getting at.
Right. And, and I guess people are gonna say, you know, if it's an election year, we have several in Congress running and it's gonna kind of be like, if not now, then when can we expect it to assist? And, and I understand, you know, but I, I have to ask the question, so.
Oh, no, I, I fully get it. And, and here's the other part that I'll get at is, and again, I don't want to seem as though I'm throwing the other agencies that share our tax bill with us. But over this level of time, we're the only agency to have done this. You know, every other agency has seen an increase in their revenues and, and they needed it and I'm not beating up on them. I understand their positions are different than what we can do. But with that, our overall portion of the tax bill has gone from being five point two percent down to four point nine percent. And yet your tax bill still seems to be going up. So I guess the point that I'm getting at is, yes, any little bit we can do to help out our residents is great, but truth be told, I don't know that I've gotten any phone calls from anybody saying, hey, thanks for holding the line on our, on our, on that portion of the tax bill. In fact, what we usually get is, but my tax bill still went up. So I understand what you're getting at. And I, I don't disagree. It's something that we've, as an agency, I think, done a very good job of trying to make sure that we protect our residents' pocketbooks as much as we can.
To bounce off of Trustee O'Rourke's comments, if we put the six million dollar request in, I mean, it sounds like there, there may be some discussion on the board of what the final rate will be. Myself, I'm interested in lowering it. That's just me. I can't speak for anybody else here. Are we shooting ourselves in the foot by, if, say, I want to lower the rate, the point four, six, six, nine? And say the majority of the board feels the same way I do, is it wrong to submit the request for six million now? Because we don't know which way the board's gonna go. And then on that vote to either increase, keep it the same, or decrease the rate, will that come at a later date?
Yes.
If six million's been requested.
Correct.
So we can have that discussion at a separate call then.
Absolutely, yeah. That final rate doesn't need to be determined until we actually get into the final budget discussion.
I just don't want to submit the request and then have it come back and go, well, you got, you got, you, you said it's what you wanted.
Yeah, I mean, there's a timing issue as it relates to the county sending me the actual numbers and getting it, you know, communication to the board, but I think it's manageable. Also, you know, that's one of the reasons why we show the distribution perspective of a four percent. You know, in this scenario, if it is a four percent increase, you know, basically we're using our increase to fund our police pension, or at least that's the recommendation from staff for this year. If you get into five, six, seven, eight percent, there's additional revenue that would, that would be found for corporate fund as an example. Or to your point, you know, if that rate is the four, six, six, nine, because there was an increase of more than four percent. To your point, we can talk to that a later date and bring that to the board, too, as well.
So is there possibility, well, we, or we will talk about either keeping the rate the same, increasing or lowering?
We can bring that forward, absolutely.
I would like to.
And the other thing to keep in mind is every year assessments, reassessments happen. So even though we're keeping the rate the same, someone's home may be reassessed, they may do an addition, they may do this or that. It's never consistent from year to year. So there's gonna be, as Brian likes to say, winners and losers from year to year. And it's based on the house value itself. And, and that's something that staff or the board can't control. Reassessments happen every four years in certain areas. So it really becomes then an individual who looks at their tax bill based on where their EAV is for that particular year and what happens to it. So regardless of how much we try to keep the rate the same, someone more than likely may have an increased property tax bill. It may be because their assessment went up. It may be because a different taxing body raised the rate. You know, it's something that, it's different for every person in the village. So, you know, from a board perspective, to keep the rate the same is where we're recommending now. We can bring back what those actuals are as we move forward. If, if the board is comfortable at least extending that six million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred, I can move that forward and we can talk through the process as it goes.
I'm comfortable with reserving the six million as long as we can talk about possibly lowering the levy later. But is, is everything else moving forward gonna be based on that four percent increase, though? That's, that's the only thing that would concern me. And by the time we get to the point to make that decision, everything else has already been discussed and kind of finalized, and then it's kind of a mute point.
The only, what will be published and what will be presented and filed with the clerk at the county's will be the six million, will not be the four percent.
No, I mean internally, when each department presents their budgets, are they gonna work off that number that's there?
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that would be the case.
That's the concern.
That's why I expressed my point that I'd like to reduce the rate in advance, at least so the, the department heads can say, okay, well, if everybody goes Wojo's way, we may be operating on a little bit less budget than we would have anticipated. I don't know, like I said, I don't know the, sorry, the feelings of the rest of you.
Well, we haven't gotten to that point yet. Oh, sorry.
I was, since this is the least archaic, most black and white process in existence in municipal government, just to quickly summarize this. We're looking at a two hundred, if we go in the direction as presented, we're going in a direction of a two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar increase in the amount of property taxes that we levy across all building owners within the municipal boundaries of the Village of Plainfield. And that two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars is gonna be, I don't want to use the word earmarked, but I will, to the police pension fund.
Actually, two hundred and sixty-six.
Okay, I, I wrote two twenty-six down, maybe.
Yeah, it's two twenty-six total, two sixty-six will go to the police pension fund and the other funds, namely, the corporate account would drop by that balance forty thousand dollars.
Okay, so, and should the board then go in the direction of saying, you know, we, you know what, in the end, we don't want to levy this extra two hundred some odd thousand dollars? Then it would be up to staff then to find those additional cuts in different areas to then bring back to us for us to approve. Okay, easy enough. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and to that end, what we will be doing is, over the next series of committee, the whole meetings, actually having discussions about the police department next, and then we have the streets department in a capital budget discussion. And then in January, we'll continue our discussions with regard to the other funds and, and the balance of the corporate account. After those are done, we'll start the process over again and the board still has a chance to fine tune exactly what we're looking at. And if there's additional information that you need and the like, we still have January and February and a little bit of March to be able to do that work, which is where the heavy lifting really takes place.
Wouldn't be just kicking the can, can, can down the road a little bit, though, if we, because there's, there's bills being formulated in Springfield for a hundred percent funding of these pension funds. We're moving up incrementally to, to, from like seventy-some percent. So if they, they say we're gonna have to fund it a hundred percent, moving it up very small amounts over the years is gonna, is gonna save us. But if we kick the can down the road, then maybe two years down the way, now we owe five hundred and some thousand dollars or seven hundred and some thousand dollars. So, I mean, this, we might be kicking it down the road if we don't take these little increments and move it up. Because like you said, this is just earmarked for the pension fund.
I'm not looking to, to put less funding in the pension fund. I'm looking to cut the budgets of the current departments to alleviate the two hundred and twenty-six thousand. I, I don't want to get in the same problem that the city of Chicago has with underfunded pensions. I, I don't believe in that as a pensioner myself. I, I, I don't agree with that. I do think that there is room to, to cut some monies out of some departments to, maybe it's not two hundred and twenty-six thousand this year, maybe it's a hundred and forty. But that's still something better than, something's better than nothing. Yeah, I, I would agree. I don't, I, I think it's like anything else. If you set the goal, you'll achieve it. If you don't set it, you know, and we have the budget, you know, obviously you're gonna have different plans in place and to know what that number is upfront makes it a lot easier, I think, to plan as we move forward, that's all.
Right. And to clarify, moving forward, if I am in favor of going ahead with, you know, keeping the amount levied the same, I do also personally believe that from a policy standpoint, keeping the police pension fund, you know, as is, as, you know, the mayor had pointed out in that kicking the can down the cur, I'm, I, I agree with you a hundred percent on that. If I were to go on the side of which I'm pretty much gonna say, yeah, I, I do agree with Trustee Wojo in that I, I do not want to take any additional property taxes from homeowners and building owners in Plainfield. That's a discussion for later. Those additional funds that we would need for the police pension fund, I would think that the board then would, obviously, as I mentioned before, direct staff then to present an alternative budget if that's gonna end up being what the majority of the board is gonna ask for. So I want to leave the police pension fund fully funded at the same level that it's at and what staff recommends. Thank you.
Let me try to provide a little perspective for maybe the audience. I think back in maybe ten, twelve years ago, the village portion of the taxes was close to ten percent. Nine point nine four seems to be a number I remember. And now we're down to four point six. So we have a much smaller proportion of the total tax bill than we used to. And we made a board decision, I don't know, five, six, seven years ago, to maintain this constant rate. I think that's a good decision. I'd leave it at that personally. One of the things which has happened tonight is we're, the tax levy thing is mandated by law. We have to have it done in December. The budget doesn't get finalized until, for heaven's sakes, we have it until the end of April to pass it. So, you know, there's a lot more discussion that's gonna go on and let's give them time to say, oh, we're gonna cut this department or that department. We haven't seen the numbers yet. But this is why, one of the important things that they've done tonight, and this, again, historical, for a long time, we didn't do it. Maybe three, four years ago, we said, okay, let's come up with a revenue forecast first. Because you can't worry about your budget unless you know what your revenue is. And to our, their credit, they've forecasted the revenue very well and generally conservative, which is the way to do it. Because then you have a chance to be a little bit flexible in where you spend money. If you have an emergency or something, you've got some resources to work with. We could say, oh, let's cut this and let's cut that and let's work on a shoestring. All of a sudden, we're gonna be caught short. As the mayor said, we may have an obligation that's double what we have now. So they're doing a really good job of planning it. Let's see it work through. This tax levy stuff is just mandated by law and it's out of sync because the actual numbers don't show up till eight, spring sometime. You know, let's, give them a break.
I, I don't mean to jump at anybody and that's not my intention, Trustee. I'm, I'm, I'm learning as well as, as some of the rest of us here on the board of how this works. And I just don't want to miss any opportunities. I, I, I don't want to sit there and go, it's gonna come later, it's gonna come later, and then it doesn't come. That's all it is. I just want to be sure that I am not missing an opportunity. I'm not telling them to cut now or cut at all.
If you're at the workshop, you will see the budget worked out in exquisite detail. It'll happen, I guarantee it. It's been happening for several years now and it'll happen again this year. And that's the time to take a look at it. And I think they do a good job of pruning it before it even gets to us. And if we want to prune more, that's our prerogative, if you will.
Ms. Blackham, could you possibly go back to?
Ms. Blackham, could you possibly go back to the slide that showed the comparison of tax rates? I believe it was the one.
This one?
That's it, right there. You know, if anybody could, I know all of you can see it, and we have it on page three of our particular Village of Plainfield two thousand and sixteen tax levy. You know, I always encourage everyone in particular, Trustee O'Rourke, to question spending. It's very valuable to question spending and to say, what direction are we going? There was a particular slide, and I'm not going to go back to it, says, where are we now? You know where we are now? We're in a real good position. Trustee Lam always says, the attention to detail is the religion of success. If you attend to detail, you'll be successful. We have attended to detail with strategic planning. We are conservative on our spending. Spending is questioned by this board on a continual basis. And now I'm going to allude to this particular chart right here. The Village of Plainfield, in our total spending on a hundred dollars of assessed valuation, the Village of Plainfield gets four point nine oh pennies cents. You look at the school district, sixty-five percent. You look at the, the different particular governmental units. What I am saying is, Trustee O'Rourke said, question our spending, and I am full agreement with him. Question our spending. We don't have to buy everything that everybody proposes, but I'm saying we should also question these other governmental units. How many people ever go and say to the school district, you're spending sixty-five percent of my tax bill, and I don't have children in the school? Or if you look at the junior college or the Plainfield Park District, Plainfield Park District gets half as much as the Village of Plainfield. Are they providing the services the Village of Plainfield provides? Yes or no? It's debatable, but they do provide services. What I'm saying is, we question our expenditures, but we also should very logically question the other portions of the Village of Plainfield tax bill. Oftentimes, I wonder, what do I receive from those other governmental units? Perhaps a lot, perhaps not much. But questioning is very valuable. We did our strategic planning, and we were very aggressive. And I think with our planning for this particular budget, we're being, we're conservative on spending, and we really do have to watch what money we spend. You don't have to have everything best. Doesn't all have to be top drawer. It can be good, but it doesn't absolutely have to be best. And we have to really watch our wallet with spending taxpayers' money. It's not trustee bucks where you can just go print more. We have a limited amount to spend, and we have to be conservative in that fashion. Thank you.
I, I have a couple more comments, sorry. I know there's been a lot of talk about maintaining the rate, which was, you know, what maybe what some people had talked about or wanted. But I think from my perspective, and I believe other peoples might feel the same way, it's really not about whatever the rate is that gets established. I think really what they care about is how much the check is. So if they're writing a bigger check, then that's going to bother them. If the rate goes up and they write a smaller check, I don't know if they care that their, the rates went up, but the check they wrote is smaller. I think that's where, really where they're looking for. And I, and I would absolutely agree. I, I know some people say the four point nine percent of the total tax bill is what the village portion is, and that's a small percentage. It is, but I, I guess that's the one that we're responsible for. So that's, you know, savings here, savings there, is what people are looking for from us as, you know, the leaders of the community making the decisions. So I would just, you know, concur with Trustee Wojcikowski, saying that, you know, we need to keep it in mind going forward that maybe, you know, the levy is not the, is not the full price that we're looking at today.
And I don't want it to seem as though the, the staff is disagreeing with the point of view. Frankly, that has been the point of view that we have espoused for the last seven years, is that the revenues that we have brought in, whether it was the rate set or not, when we set the rate, we actually saw a decrease in the total revenues that came on in. This is the first year that you're actually potentially seeing a, a real substantive bump in that revenue. But it's offset against the obligation to the pension fund. So where you saw that is really that you're keeping the revenues that are coming into the corporate account as flat, which continues our, which will then be an eight-year tradition of making sure that the revenues that go into the corporate account has been the same or less than it has been in, in, in over eight years. So that's the position and point of view that we were taking a look at it as we were presenting this for the board. But understand fully that, you know, the opportunity to have those discussions still remain and the like. By all means, we, we, we absolutely agree that the more we can do to minimize the tax burden on our residents, the more we'd like to do that. And that's something that we will continue to do on behalf of the board, and we're very happy to continue that conversation.
And I would say thank you for that. And, and please don't interpret my comments as, you know, negative towards, you know, the policies and, and all the work you guys have done. I mean, quite the opposite. I would go back and say, you know, you guys, the prior trustees, the staff has done an outstanding job. I mean, I went back and I looked at my tax bill. Two thousand and nine, my share of the, to the village was three hundred and ninety-six dollars. Even with the four percent increase for two thousand and seventeen, I'm going to be at three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So roughly twenty dollars less over the last eight years I'm going to be paying to the village. So, you know, are you guys doing a good job? Yeah, you're doing a good job. But, you know, I'm up here elected, people aren't wanting me to, to try to get you to do even better job and sharpen that pencil and save a little bit more even. So that's the reason for the questioning. Not that you guys are doing a bad job, because, you know, you look at the numbers and it comes across that you're doing, you're doing a very good job.
You know, Trustee O'Rourke, you should not apologize for your position. You're, you were elected to question, not to sit there in a stoic fashion and not question. It's a valuable position to have as an elected official. What you're questioning has a validity beyond belief. So whatever you do, not everyone will possibly agree with you. I will, definitely, but.
Oh, my God.
But it is your position to question, so it should not be even brought up.
I question why I have to sit next to Jim at every meeting. I'm kidding, Trustee. You know that. You know that full well.
No, I think, I think it's important, too, that, that we, we also acknowledge the staff does a great job at keeping the expenses down. And we will look through all this, and we will look for ways to, to save as, as I know they do as well. And I think that, I think it is very important for us to look at this each time we go out. You know, when we started on this board, some of us in, in oh nine, it was, it was tough times. There was, there was funding in the red. We had, we had a lot of issues. We had a lot of foreclosures that were going on, a lot of things. And I think that you've, you've led us out very well for the financial side of things, ahead of schedule and everything, and then try to keep things in check. But I think it is important that we also, as a board, continue to look and question and review everything. And I think we've, I'd like to think we've caught up on some things with the purchases made along the way, and now we can even out a little bit. Who knows? We'll see it as each department brings forward. So thank you very much.
So the, the intent is we'll bring forward the levy request at the higher dollar amount, but we will discuss further going forward, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, and just to note, on the pension funding discussion, the state requires ninety percent funding based on their calculations. We have always gone to a hundred percent funding calculation. So we always levy a little higher than what the state requires with the intent of getting to that hundred percent funding at some point in time. So we're slowly seeing that. When the investments don't return the rates that you'd like to see, it doesn't help, but it's slowly getting the progress that it needs to be. And from the policy from the board has always been to fund at that one hundred percent calculation. So that's what's presented in this, in the worksheet as well.
And to that point as well, another reminder that the formulas by which the mortality assumptions were changed, which is largely what's driving this, I don't want to make it seem as though that additional money is because the fund is underperforming and that the trustees of that aren't doing their fiduciary responsibility. They take that job very seriously. They do a wonderful job, but the additional cost to us is driven entirely by that new mortality table. It's, it's a twenty percent hit.
Well, part of it. I'm trying to read through that. It's a good way to go to sleep. But there are a couple of things that you're intriguing from it. It looks like the unfunded balance, they're charging interest on that. You haven't put money in there, therefore you have to pay the interest as you would have gathered. What interest are they collecting at? Seven and a half percent?
Yeah, seven and a half is the calculation right now. There's talks about looking at that rate to make it a lesser amount. It hasn't been changed, but that's the calculation.
The problem is, mortality rates are one of the issues, but the other are the assumptions they use. Now, if salary increases are four and a half to ten and a half percent per year on an individual basis, we don't increase that much. The interest is seven and a half percent. Nowhere in history do I see them achieving seven and a half percent, at least not recently.
No, our recent performance has been under that, but their historical average is still coming in around that number.
Seven and a half, but not, not last, last year we lost.
Last year we lost.
This year it's six point, under seven. See, those, those assumptions drive this as well.
Yeah.
And I hope somebody's challenging those or looking at those. If they finally keep tweaking them, great. Make them, make them accurate, but.
And on the salary assumptions, it's based on the, the union contract for, for the pension. So although maybe there's a two and a half percent increase, there's steps involved as well. So that average increase calculates some of the steps that happen throughout the, the contract and what's obligated within that contract. So we've looked at the salary bumps to make sure that they're pretty consistent and with what the contract currently has, and they are.
Also, I did looked into, looked at it. There's two different types of pensions. There's before two thousand and eleven hires and after two thousand, sometime in there. And I assume that, as I can tell, only four employees fall after the, the start date of the new pension. Eventually, that will make a bigger difference. I can't quantify, there's not enough information here to quantify the impact of that. But the cost of living increase looked to be significantly less. Talking about three percent or half of the cost of living, I believe.
Right.
Cost of living hasn't even been close to three in a long time. So that will make a difference, not for forty-nine of our fifty-three people, but that's, that's fine. We'll honor what we've got. But going forward, there may be some more logic to it. As I said, there's a lot of attention needs to be played just beyond the, paid, beyond the mortality rates, numbers. And as long as somebody's continued to look at those and make them realistic, then great. We want people to get good pensions and have reliable. We want them to be there. But let's not create hurdles so unbelievable that nobody ever gets there. So, work in progress, hopefully.
Well, thank you all very much for the input tonight. Next steps, as Mrs. Blackham laid out, is you'll see this property tax extension in Monday's agenda?
Yeah, there'll be an acknowledgement of the estimate for the six point one million to be approved through the board, then it'll go through the public hearing stage. I mean, the village is home rule. There's no statute obligation that we have to go through a public hearing. It's always been the practice, though, of this board and previous boards to have that public hearing and public input. There's no cap on the rates that can be extended as a whole. That five percent is really capped for non-home rule or CPI. But again, you know, by virtue of, of keeping the rate the same, it's a cap for the village, and that's the direction that we've had in the past for dollar amounts, too. But a practice has always been, we'll have the public hearing, we'll have public input, and then we'll move forward with that, file it, and then we'll have more discussions as the numbers come in.
Is there no other comments?
Reminders?
The planning commission meeting for tomorrow has been canceled, but November twenty-first will be our next village board meeting, and the twenty-eighth will be our next committee of the whole.
We're seeking a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
And seconded. To adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
If any of the students needs their papers signed, come on up, Lador.